Seeing that, the appointed time has arrived when I open the meeting for the July 19, 2023 Mashpee Planning Board at Town Hall. 16, thank you, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. The time is 7:00 PM. I welcome everyone here tonight. We are being broadcast live on Channel 18 and streamed on the Town Mashpee website. We are being videoed and recorded tonight as well. It's mashpma.gov/number-18. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a birthday among our midst tonight. This gentleman is...
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine years old. Let's all sing happy birthday to this great Mashpee resident.
I'm putting my mic down.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Dennis. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Dennis.
All right, so, we'd like to prove the minutes, and the minutes are... Review of meeting minutes from July 5, 2023. Does anyone have any changes or edits?
No, I make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 So, the motion carries. Okay, next one is approval not required. The applicant is John and Carla Mullen, trustees of the Carla E. Mullen 2012 Trust, 188 Pimlico Road, Mashpee, Mass. Assessors map two parcel 191 and 192. The request is, purpose of the A and R is to divide lots one and two as shown on the plan, creating new lots A and B. The remaining area of lot one after division will be combined with lot B, and the remaining area of lot two after division will be combined with lot A. Now, Evan, last time we were here, Mary made a comment that she didn't understand why this could be an A and R, because the lot frontage is supposed to be 150 feet, but it was only 130. What did you find out?
So, I assumed when Mary posed the question that this lot may have been created prior to the town's adoption of subdivision control, which was not the case back in... There was a variance issued for the subject parcel subsequent to... So, back in the late 90s, there was a variance decision issued to the property that allowed for the variance of the frontage down to the 132 and change that is shown in the plan, that didn't get recorded in time for it to be a valid variance. But shortly thereafter of its approval by the ZBA in the late 90s, the planning board approved a definitive subdivision plan, you know, in consideration of that variance, and it's gone on record at the Registry of Deeds as shown on the attached, or on the submitted A and R plan. So, the frontage, as it is shown on the A and R plan of 132 and change, I'm not looking quite at it, but is a resultant of a variance that was affirmed by the Board of Appeals in 2012. And again, is, exists today by way of the approval of that definitive plan back in the late 90s that was endorsed by the planning board. In your package is both the most recent variance decision and the 1998 definitive plan. I can't recall exactly the date.
1999.
1999, thank you, Mary. And as such, so the submitted A and R plan does not propose any alterations to the approved frontage, nor does it alter any of the approved land area. It's a land swap of equal land area, and as such, I believe is entitled to endorsement as an A and R.
When the ZBA gives a variance, does that have any determination as, tell us what we as a planning board can do? Are we limited by that decision?
So, for an A and R in particular, you're looking at the lots area and its frontage being consistent with zoning. So, you can't endorse an A and R if it's inconsistent with zoning, except whereas the ZBA authorizes or approves a variance that goes on record. That's the applicable frontage criteria for this particular lot.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, let's see. May I have a motion to recommend the endorsement of the Mullins' plan at A and R at 1880 Pimlico Pond Road, Mashpee?
So moved.
Second. Yes, you want to say something?
All you had to do was say approval not required. We're not giving them any, we're just saying.
Endorsing the approval not required.
Re- re- yeah.
I, yeah, I...
That's...
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nate, motion carried.
I'll just need everyone's signature on that, Myla, before we leave today.
Let's do it now.
Karen, I just need everyone's signature on that plan.
I'm not hearing you.
I need everyone's signature on the plan on the front table.
Oh, okay, so we just come up?
Yes.
Okay.
If that's acceptable to you. How's the ankle?
(inaudible).
Oh, yeah? That's my brother, his birthday.
Yeah.
August 2nd.
They go by fast, don't they?
Oh, yes.
Excuse me.
I can fill it in for you, Dennis, okay?
You fill it?
Yeah, I can take care of it. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a new business, vote to set public hearing for an application submitted by Pleasantwood Homes LLC for a cluster development special permit and definitive subdivision plan of property addressed as 20 Tudor Terrace, assessors map 29, lot 198. You have in your packet two draft Mashpee Planning Board public hearing notices. One for 710 to approve a special permit for a cluster subdivision on August 16 proposed, and the other one...
715.
Is at 715 to application made by Pleasantwood Homes LLC for approval of a definitive subdivision plan as to Tudor, 20 Tudor Terrace. So, may I have a motion to set the public hearing for approval of special permit for a cluster subdivision?
So moved.
Second, with the time.
At the time, at 710 on August 16, 2023.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passes. And the second motion would be a motion to set the public hearing for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, excuse me, at 20 Tudor Terrace for August 16, 2023, at 715.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes. Okay, so, what else are we going to have on that day? Is there anything?
Nothing yet. It depends what happens on August 7.
Okay.
So, there's nothing currently scheduled for the 16, besides those two hearings you just voted to advertise.
All right. Okay, our engineer's not here, doesn't, I guess doesn't need to be here. This is all business, the declaration of default at Aquway Highlands.
No major changes since I've last updated you. Ed's been trying to coordinate a meeting with Lawrence Lynch and with Jacques Morin relative to some, you know, persistent, I'd say nagging problems at this point. You know, the road has been substantially improved, the conservation commission violation's remedied, the management of the stormwater's been improved. People are still, I'm getting reports of issues with the ends of people's driveways still.
Is that part of his responsibility?
It's, whether it's a subdivision control responsibility or a building code issue, I think it's the latter, not the former. Nonetheless, I think we want to do our best to try and remediate the situation as best as we are able for the residents of Blue Castle Drive. Additionally, I've received some correspondence from folks coming back that they are unhappy with the condition of the original permit relative to the maintenance program, and they wish that it was paved, but I'm finding the opportunity to educate folks relative to the conditions of that permit and informing them of what they can expect if there's a public taking of the road or if the special permit on record, you know...
Is that traffic radar speed sign, has that been purchased?
Not yet.
So, how long are we going to wait? I want to keep this on the agenda until, we don't want to keep it on the agenda.
I will ask Jacques if he can execute an acquisition.
Okay, I'm inclined to...
I haven't done that yet.
Well, I don't know, I don't, that's part of the tripart agreement. He's supposed to purchase it and install it, correct?
Purchase it and give it to the town.
Give it to the town to install.
Mike, how much do they cost? You got a couple of, you know, New Seaberry there.
What's that?
Those signs, you know, that, you know, fast, you know?
It was 3,000.
Yeah, the speed signs are about three grand a piece, 3,300 bucks.
But that ain't really how much money...
The batteries, the batteries last, you know, 10 days.
We're going to get that situation.
So, are we just going to leave it? We don't, oh, well, I guess the motion would be to continue the declaration of default?
I mean, I think it's in...
One more time? I mean, how many times are we going to do this?
I mean, it's really up to you. I think the major issues have been responded to.
Uh huh.
I don't think you need to maintain this on the agenda, my professional opinion. However, he does have one outstanding item that he needs to address, maintenance, that's a special permit condition.
Maintenance of the unpaved road.
And that's not secured by the tripartite agreement, so in a sense, it's a separate matter. The radar sign is secured by the tripartite agreement, which is now invalid because of the dates. It would be in Mr. Morin's interest to purchase the sign and consider it a done deal. That'll leave us the opportunity to continue work with zoning enforcement relative to that maintenance question with Ed, which Jacques has expressed an understanding of his responsibility to improve the condition of the road.
Okay, I'd like to hear what our board thinks about this. I think it's just kind of ridiculous.
Well, if we're not going to enforce, declare default, we should put in writing the fact that this is the last time we won't, and next time we meet, we will.
Just keep in mind, if we declare default, we're just going to be, we'll be letting Jacques know that we're going to be taking, capturing the money from his bank to buy the sign ourselves.
Well, what's so bad about doing that? I mean, this is, this is crazy.
Nothing.
You keep putting this on the meeting, on the agenda, and he just doesn't...
Well, to be fair, staff, I don't think, or any of you have really compelled or asked Jacques definitively to purchase that sign. It needs to be communicated to him.
Well, why does it need to be?
Okay, so, yeah, so, accept a motion to do so.
All right, I'm, I want to hear what you have to say. This is on the, this is an attachment, a schedule to the tripartite agreement. He's known this for years.
If you don't have the money, buy it.
If you don't buy it, we'll declare default.
Yes, that's what I think we should do.
Okay.
You want to do that?
Let's make that a motion.
So be it.
All in favor?
Yeah, what I motion?
I guess the motion would be to...
He is.
To notify the developer of his obligation to purchase the traffic radar sign as secured by the tripartite agreement by your next meeting with proof of purchase.
On the second.
Otherwise, the board will...
Donation to the town.
In donation to the town. Otherwise, the board will vote, opt to declare default at its meeting of August 2 to procure the sign and install it ourselves.
Okay.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Yes, perfect. Who seconded, did you second it?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, regarding the outstanding item at the end of the driveways...
Yeah.
Perhaps we should ask our engineer for a report on that at our next meeting.
Well, do you, do you happen to know if that was done?
No, that's...
The meeting's being coordinated. I don't know if it's happened yet. Ed's not here.
Yeah.
Jacques wrote to Ed and Lawrence Lynch and notified them that he is also out of town, so they're, they're working on coordinating the meeting.
Okay.
I can't make them be in town, obviously, to make it happen, but it's underway.
Okay, good.
So...
So, we should put it on our next meeting then.
So, I'm, what I'm asking is that Ed Pesci give us a report at our next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A report, or do we want to order that to be, well, we can't, we don't have any authority. It's not part of the tripartite.
To the report on the ends, the issues at the ends of the driveway and...
An update, basically, I want to...
The maintenance, the maintenance matter, if he's resolved the schedule of maintenance with the developer.
What part are you talking about?
The, the special permit has requirement for maintenance of the roads.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think that we should start up with a report by our engineer on those two matters at our next meeting.
Okay.
The thing with the driveways, though?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's in the agreement, because that's the developer, they didn't, I've been up there, and they didn't landscape it right. They should have come down with a slope. The streets here and the driveways...
Right.
Like that.
So, the water keeps going up the driveway.
Or the other way, they could put some drains in there, like a French drain.
Yeah.
That's up to the developer, but I don't know how much weight we have about the driveway. That's between the developer and the homeowners. You know, that ain't on, I don't think that's on the agreement with the...
I think the one thing we want Ed to consider is, you approved the stormwater control system in that subdivision, and it's currently depositing water at the end of the driveway. So, I mean, there's a building code related issue in that, you know, their finished elevation of the driveway, of the street wasn't considered when installing the driveway, not adequately considered, it's slightly off. The apron of these driveways that meet the street are within the road layout.
Yeah.
So, ultimately, ultimately, we're going to work towards a resolution. Jacques committed a meeting on site, Ed's meeting with Lawrence Lynch on site, we all want to come find a resolution here. I've communicated with a number of neighbors to that effect. It's just about getting this coordinated and accomplished.
Okay, do we need a motion on this?
I'll communicate to Ed that he's to, you know, report back to you at your next meeting. I'm hopeful that the meeting between the developer, Lawrence Lynch, and Ed will occur prior to, prior, and prior to then.
Okay. All right, so, we don't have board engineer report here. The next is chairman's report. Okay, I know Rob was there Monday night at the select board, and I was there, and Mary was there, but for the other people and for all of us, I copied what was handed out by, or actually shown to GHD, and I'll pass it down here. Mary, you have one?
Yeah, I printed it out, but here you go.
Okay, all right. And it was a very, very good meeting. I think John Cotton's here, and I'm sure he agrees, it was unanimous, and the attitude was wonderful in the room. If you, I'll let you, you know, study this yourself, but I'll just highlight what, what happened. If you turn the page and go to option nine, and, and take your pen so you can understand this completely, this is what we decide, or this is we, we didn't decide, this is what select board decided. I think Andrew Gottlieb was very instrumental in pushing it over the goal. It seemed like we should, we should go big as opposed to small, and if you look at, let's see, in this packet here, you'll see these pages, if you could kind of flip to that, put your finger on it, so I can talk to you about that. It's the second page of the blue sheet. Basically, option nine is a combination, as it says right here, of option four, which basically was Mashpee Neck Phase, which is Phase Two of the 2015 approved plan, so that's down here in the blue, Mashpee Neck, Pirates Cove. The white line, wiggly line in the gray area there is the Mashpee River, and to the left of that, just so you can get your bearings, that blue part is Sandalwood, and the blue part, that's the top blue part, if, do you see what I'm saying? Sandalwood and Holland Mills is down there, and the green one is Greenwood. So, originally, well, I was thinking we should go with eight to have, have building and sewer ing on both sides of the river, but I think this was the compromise, because it was cheaper and it would cover more, more properties. The cost of this is 88 million, and it will, when I say cost, that's the estimate, and it will cover or sewer 1,288 properties. If you look at this here, the pink is going down Great Neck Road, and I'm not exactly, Evan, maybe you can tell me, you know, the, the orange is telling you what they're building. This is phase, the green is phase, I think, four, and the pink is phase one of the 2015 approved plan, and I'm not exactly sure this comes by Town Hall and it goes as far as Main Street? Does that look about right to you?
I'm sorry, I'm not looking at it.
Yep, it goes to Main Street.
And I, okay, so now...
It goes a little bit above.
Okay, and so, the, the orange circle going around that yellow and green at the top, phase four is the yellow, which is the 2015 approved plan, phase three, you know, if you look at the 2015 plan, you can look at the map and see phase three, to the right of that, that little gray spot there is Santuit Pond, and that will sewer a part of that pond. So, I asked GHD on Monday night after they left, what, when would we see some big improvement? And he couldn't answer it, but they think this is a good, they're all good plans, but this is a good plan, because this is, quote, maybe, as somebody said, "The best bang for your buck." It's 68,000, sounds unbelievable, but that's what it is, 68,000 for each, if you divide 1,288 into 88 million, you get 68,000 per unit, but I think this is going to really push us along greatly. Oh, and the key thing here, this is what everybody wanted to know, is what is this going to cost? What is this going to be in addition to our real estate taxes? And they said that the estimate, which is a, I think, is it, John, is it an August 20, 2022 estimate? Do you know?
Just, because you're a...
Sure.
State your name, please.
John Cotton. I don't have the estimate in front of me, but...
No, I know what it is, but I'm just asking, because it's, it's the uptick in the tax for the average, real estate tax for the average household is $253 more a year.
Correct, and that was on a value of, I believe, like 650,000, which is the median, I believe, in Mashpee.
Median, so we're talking, starting at six...
That was, and everybody can...
That's the average.
And everybody can escalate, if your house is worth twice that, then it's twice that.
Kind of figure it out. And one thing that I didn't understand, maybe you could answer that question, is Andrew said it could be a lot less. I mean, I know there's the 12 and a half percent forgiveness on the principal, and it's a 30-year zero loan, but where does...
Well, the forgiveness process, none of it's guaranteed, I guess is the best way to say it, so you submit the application, we assume that we're going to get, we're in, we're in good pole position as far as, because of our applications and everything is, you know, we're in a good position, and they feel confident, but there's no guarantees. So, there's a lot of...
Yeah, I thought GHD felt very confident, because it's the approved plan, the 2015. Basically, it's just a different order is what we're doing.
Right, us compared to all the other applications, we would, they felt very confident about our position as getting...
Yeah.
The value or the discounts and, you know, and there's also, again, that's assuming standard taxes presently, we're not talking about split tax and other...
Right.
Possibilities, so, and again, that was, like you said, you stated, you quoted very fairly, it's an estimate, so, there's...
Hopefully, it's somewhere in the ballpark.
I got a question. We already spent, what, 62 million for phase one?
54, 54 million, I thought.
Yeah, and then we got the 10 million over.
Oh, and then the 12 more.
Yeah, something, so, thereabouts.
So, this is on top of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, this is a phase two on top of the 64-ish from phase one.
I, we should stop doing it now, not keep on waiting, because every month we wait, that price is going to go up. All the stock, everything's going up, so, the quicker we can move on it. Took 30 years just to get to phase one. Let's hope it don't take another 30 years to try to do this part.
Hey, I'm looking at, Dennis, last year was phase one, and now we just did phase two, so, I, I think we're, we're on track.
Good.
You know, and at the same time, if you look at the whole, I'm looking at, if you look at all the possibilities, can you imagine if they just said, if we just said, "Oh, yeah, just do it all," how are we going to afford it all at once? That's the other problem, too. Ian, on top of that, can you imagine digging up...
The whole town.
The whole town at the same time, I mean...
People are upset about it now.
It's, but again, everyone, that's not going to be an easy thing, you gotta, I mean, 250, you know, I'll be okay, I'll, I'll figure it out. There'll be people that may not be able to figure that out, so, we have to cross that road.
One other thing, you've got to make sure you communicate with all the people, because when we go to town meeting, like you just said, 250 may not be bad for me, but there's quite a few people, but we've got to state the fact that we've got to clean the water, because it won't be nice to live here if we don't have nice water.
I think most people now have come to the conclusion that we can't wait any longer, and I think they will suck it up, that's, you know...
Well, I, I said it at the end of the meeting, and I hoped everybody that was there at the meeting on Monday, if we do what we did last time, I'm hoping for the same outcome, a unanimous, I think it'd be amazing, I think everyone, again, but everybody band together to pull forward and to make this happen, let, show up, talk to people, understand, so they understand that, hey, it may be difficult, but maybe we can figure out some options for people that this...
Would we be able to have any options before we go to town meeting, so some, a select person or someone could get up and speak on, well, finance committee or somebody could speak on this?
Well...
You don't know.
We can, I mean, we, we have to, I mean, again, we're not, this tax increase is not even, that's not going to, this is, we're not talking about now.
Right.
It's not even this fiscal year, so, but there is some work to do with, you know, maybe we can, and then we had, we had this Senate state rep in here, you know, the reason for that was, we need funds, you know, go get it. If there's anything we can do to get it, that was the reason for them coming, so, I think we, we do need to consider, there may be some people find this to be incredibly, you know, challenging, and I think we're just going to have to be open ears and listen to possible answers on how we can assist with that.
Not only that, where we're putting the systems in, those people have to pay to hook up to the system.
Right.
So, that's going to be a big burden on some people, not only, just because my taxes going up to help pay for the sources.
That's much more of a concern, because it's thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
So, that's why that CDBG application is vital.
Yeah, and that's also through the, the loan program to bond stable, so...
Right, right.
But you can get, you can get 0%, you can, you can do grants through the US HUD, Community Development Block Grant Program, so, that, that's really important for that to happen, and that's definitely going to need some pressure from the Board of Slockman to make sure it gets done.
So, again, this, we have...
Oh, I think, I think the movement is here. I think you heard the audience, you know, applauding when maybe they shouldn't have been applauding, but we are happy about this.
No, I mean, that was, that was the right time for applause.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, that was... You know, it's, it's, that was, that was a, I, I mean, I looked at it as-
A ground swell.
You know, when you applaud because someone's speaking out of turn and the whole thing, that's, you know, that's, I think that's inappropriate and rude, but when you applaud because the town's coming together unanimously, you know, let's, let's do that, celebrate together.
Okay, thank you, John.
So, thank you.
I, I had a question from constituents, I guess, they talked about, they asked me to get clarification. Let's, let's call it two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars of tax increase. It's for phase two, it does not go into effect this year, it goes, let's say, in effect next year on a tax basis, maybe? And phase two is a multiple-year situation of spending the money down. Will the tax be a one-year or a multiple-year increase at two-fifty?
It's thirty years.
Thirty years.
Thirty years.
You thirty years to pay it off.
And it's, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even, I mean, you got to, we're not even going to finish phase one.
Right.
So, I mean, could they start with some construction, so it's, you know, it depends on where it's going to fall, I mean, we could be talking the following, I mean, they just can't dig up all the streets and, once we get the treatment center online, and again, I'm no expert, so I could be corrected at any moment, then it's a matter of, we're kind of feeding it because it's in operation, and so I'm assuming that process can be, you know, dig up the street, have the connections, and hopefully start, you know, connect to the treatment center, so that it could be a little bit more of a fluid. Right now, it's, this first phase is still going to be a little bit clunky, because they have to connect, they have, they have to have the laterals in, then they got to connect, and then they got to, like, I assume it's like flip the switch, and then they have to have so much flow, and, and they have to have so many people connect, and, and some people could have extenuating circumstances, they could have a, a, a special system already in place that they don't, they're not forced to connect right away, but you do have to have so much flow for it to work. So the first step, first phase, you know, and again, it's, we're challenged that, you know, Ray Jack not being here, you know, where we could kind of say, so Ray, how's this, how do you think this is going to work? We got to work on that, you know?
Who are you getting answers from, I will be Weston and Samson?
We, yeah, that's, so right now, and again, that's an ongoing challenge, and we have to kind of figure that out, if, you know, how long do we go with, you know, temporary counsel or advice and consultation? I, I don't know, I, I have my opinion, but that's just my opinion.
John, I, I heard that where they're hooking up all these streets, it wouldn't be enough flow to go in to, to make it work right. Is that going to be a problem, we don't have enough going into the-
You've got to have a certain amount of capacity to make it work right, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, this-
Right here.
The phase one has enough to, to, you know, to turn it on, but it also, but it has to have-
It has to have enough to-
Are they saying, is all phase one ready to flip the switch? Or is it, it can't be just three streets, I don't think.
Right.
I think it has to, because it just has to have enough flow. It's no different than you flush your toilet.
In this option nine, I think one has the recharge capacity, but they're telling you right here disadvantages in this option, which, you know, I guess we're going to work on, complex permitting process, which they went into a little bit, to increase recharge capacity. So I think they're talking about really phase two, three, the other phases, the other phases that are on this option nine. I think the capacity is fine, isn't it, you agree, for one?
Oh, now for phase one, yes, it can handle all that, but that's, but phase, you know, what we approved for phase two-
Yeah.
Is, and again, it's, each step has got some, some maybe upgrades to the treatment center, some upgrades are already built in to handle a little bit of what we could do as another phase. So, but it depends, if you do, you know, a two-A and a two-B after this, we may have enough capacity to handle that as-is.
Right.
I don't know, that's, that's the experts to tell us, no, we have to do a little bit more, add another tank, or add this, or that.
If you look at phase one, you see it's just the pink, that's what we're doing, and it's not till, I guess, phase four, well, that we're looking at Mashpee Neck and Pirates Cove, so that's a higher level, and that's where we have the, we have to increase recharge capacity. I have no idea how you do that, but the engineers, I'm sure know.
Well, that's-
Another thing that's been bothering me, we're going to discharge this into Pompano Bay, right, goes in the ground, and eventually winds to the Pompano Bay.
Well, actually, yes and no, because officially, I, I, again, I'm a novice at this, so my understanding is most of the discharge is actually going to be in those discharge-
It's going to be at the green spot.
Yeah, that field.
And it goes into Pompano, it's the Pom, it's the, it's Poppy Estuary.
Yeah, so, I mean, but, but that's where-
It's in the middle of the pink.
But that's the, but that discharge, what they talked about at the meeting was, you know, with that increase, as we move forward with increase, how is that going to affect the other water levels in lakes or ponds in the area and things like that, or, or rivers or streams? It can affect the water table, so-
Because we're sand.
Yeah.
So it's-
So DEP-
Pompano Bay, though, the tide goes out and comes in, so we discharge this stuff into the bay, eventually gets in there, but it never gets out because the tide's bringing it right back in. We need to build a pipe.
Yeah, but-
Oh.
Really want to fix this, that's what you've got to do, and you tie in your half the cape on this one system, we're kidding ourselves.
But, but here's the thing, I understand what you're saying, but here, here's, I know this is, sounds, might sound gross, the whole thing, and I'm not going to test it, but the discharge is drinking-worthy.
It's clean.
So you can drink it.
Not for yourself.
I'm, I'm, I'm not doing it, but I'm just saying, if you're talking about what we're cleaning, this is-
That's the goal, right.
It's, so the discharge, it's not like we're flushing our toilet with that discharge, it, that's drinkable water that we're discharging.
I worked on Deer Island, and when it got through, it was running, the guy from the DP came out, boy, he goes, "This is drinkable water," and he drank it.
I-
And he said, "That's how clean this water," because people are still concerned when they go out in the pipe and stuff.
Again, it's-
Is he still around?
Yeah. I mean, they spent a lot of money on that plan, do you believe?
Well, that's the goal, the idea is to make sure that it is clear and clean when it comes out, I mean, that's the goal.
That's-
You wouldn't do this otherwise.
That's why we have the best treatment center on the planet, from my, that's quote-unquote what I heard, including the increased membrane or whatever that means, it's a extra filtering barrier or something, we have it. So other, I don't know if, this is the latest and greatest technology, so.
Okay. I anticipate we're going to hear a lot about Wacoit Bay now.
That's, that's-
Right, that's the, that's the, that's the side that's kind of was cut off of the map, so heads up.
Yep.
Because that's important, too.
Yep, that's, it was, we heard a little bit of that at the, at the end of the meeting, so.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so this is really interesting, you know, it just takes like a couple of hours to really read this and look at it, and it's good, it's good. So what we have left is a board town planner report, housing production.
I just want to update you that myself and the Barrett Planning Group, the representatives from the Barrett Planning Group who are assisting us with the update of our housing production plan, met last week with the Affordable Housing Committee to generally go over the process, identify, you know, where we're starting, what we're doing, you know, very similar to the approach and how we rolled out the comprehensive plan. Obviously, in data collection now, assessment of existing conditions. We went over with the Affordable Housing Committee a rough draft of the engagement schedule, and so between now and when engagement really starts, we'll be in stakeholder interview mode, and so we've, we've done some of that already alongside department heads with the goal of coordinating additional stakeholder meetings via Zoom or in-person with the, you know, remaining important groups to discuss with. So that is underway. I'll keep the board apprised of engagement opportunities, we're planning on doing two primary workshops and a survey, and, you know, really anticipate this plan, obviously working towards establishing an implementation plan to get us to our ten percent minimum mandate, but also that recognizes the increasing housing need for those folks who are not, or who, who earn above eighty percent of the area median income, so a lot more to come, a very, we're at the infancy of the process, and hope to have a plan submitted to the state by the new year. More to come.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. Board member committee reports, Mary, Cape Cod Commission?
No report.
Community preservation?
Yep, there was a couple of votes that happened, the, and Evan probably knows this, the housing, Affordable Housing Trust was funded, I think, sixty thousand dollars?
Sixty, sixty, yeah.
Sixty thousand dollars, so that will be on the town meeting warrant. And I think that was the last vote. The, the other two votes were two-hundred thousand dollars for disc golf and about eighty-five thousand dollars for historic restoration of cemeteries in town.
Sorry, Mary, I'm having a hard time hearing, what was the last eighty-five?
It was about eighty-five thousand dollars for preservation and restoration of historic cemeteries in town.
Okay. Thank you. Design review, no meeting. Plan review, Evan?
No meeting.
No meeting. EOC, no meeting.
I did, I did hear that Paul Colombo was appointed to the EOC by the Conservation Commission, and that vote was confirmed by the Board of Selectmen, uh, Select Board. So it's coming, your first meeting is coming.
Okay.
I think you, I think there's now quorum.
Dennis, Historic District Commission?
No meeting.
Okay.
Coming up, though.
Yep.
Okay, no additional topics?
I make the most weight adjourned.
Second?
Yeah, let me just see, is there anybody who wants public comment? Anybody want to say anything?
Teresa Ronhop, 104 DeGrasse Road. I didn't know if you were going to have some comment on the old business for Ocway Highlands, and I just wanted to submit a couple pictures. I know that at the last meeting, there were some concerns about the dirt pile and that had gone on to, to town council. I, I don't know how much of this is directly related to the planning board's purview, but I just think it speaks more to the developers' consideration of the neighbors and the neighborhood and, you know, how, what, what's, what's happening there. So one of the pictures I'm going to submit is, shows that the dump truck that is hauling the dirt from the pile there that they were requested to, to level out so it wouldn't be a hazard, has a twenty-twenty-one sticker on it, so it shouldn't even be, shouldn't be parked on the property, and it shouldn't be moving or hauling equipment, it's not registered, it's not legal. The other thing is that there is so much construction equipment being stored on this, in this residential area that, I mean, this has been going on for four years, and this construction, like I said, you know, some of the equipment is not even roadworthy, and the rest is construction equipment. And this continues to go on, and just some of the points I just wanted to make, and I know you, you have a lot on your plate, and this is a small piece, but the fact that everything that Jacques Morin has been asked to do has cost the town of Mashpee time and resources, I mean, the Conservation Commission has had to go out there several times, we've had to, you know, inflict fines, you know, make, make process for things that he should have been doing as a, as a developer in this area, you know, the whole mess that he had on the conservation land, and just continues to speak to his attitude toward the neighborhood, and, and I know that this will be continued on to the next meeting, but I just want to submit these photographs, if I could.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yep.
So this, this equipment that's being stored, is it equipment that's being used on, it's at this construction site?
No.
No, because currently, all the houses are, are, all the foundations are in for the houses that he has building permits for, and this last house that he has built has been, he's been in the process of building this house for, I would check with my neighbors, at least two years, so a foundation hasn't been constructed on this, in this development in over two years, and it could be longer. So these, this equipment and these materials are not anything that he would be using right now, or has been using in the last couple of years.
I don't think he can use this area as storage, that might be a violation of the special permit.
Storing, my understanding is storing construction material that's not in use, and this material has, these, these machines have been not needed or been in use in, not months, but years, and-
How could we find out if that's a violation of the special permit?
Well, you can't, you can't do outside storage of materials if it's not in connection with a building permit, but if it's in connection with a building permit, he can store the materials, so we can refer this to the building commissioner again.
Yeah, that's their purview.
So that's a complaint to the building department?
Yeah, and we, and we have, we have, and we will continue to do that, it's just, for this board's, I just want to just continue to, to let you know, you know, what this developer's attitude has been towards the, the people who are purchasing houses from him, not only that, but the other people in the neighborhood, it's ongoing, and it's, I mean, he has made corrections, and there have been improvements, trust me, we, we are thankful to this board because we feel like you've been a catalyst in a, in a lot of the improvements that have happened over there, but there continues to be violations that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Anyone else care to speak? Okay, with that, I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
There was one.
There was a motion?
There's a motion on the floor, and it was seconded.
I mean, a motion to adjourn.
Second, there was a second, all those in favor?
Aye, all right.
Thank you.